Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Tuesday, May 20th. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." Thank you to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country and to the Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'll move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. councillor McLean.
Thank you Mayor Given. I would move the minutes of the city council meeting held May 5, 2014 be adopted.
Thanks very much councillor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Does it look like we've got everything in order? If it does, then I'll call for the vote to adopt them. That motion carries. Motion for the special council meeting minutes councillor Radburn.
Thank you Mayor Given. I would move the council, the minutes of the special city council meeting held May 12, 2014 be adopted. This was a meeting where we specifically talked about the 55-plus Winter Games bid and the city has guarantor for their Airport Commission borrowing.
Thanks very much councillor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on those set of minutes? Do they look like they accurately reflect what happened? Looks like they do, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion is carried as well. Now we look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda and councillor Logan, you're first in the queue. We had two additional items.
You had two additional items on the agenda?
Yes, we had two additions tonight.
Well, you better get somebody else to make the motion because I don't know what they are.
Okay, fair enough. Thanks very much councillor Logan for passing it on. Councillor O'Toole, do you have those?
Yes, thank you very much Mayor Given. I would like to adopt the agenda with two additions, 9.3.1 and it's the downtown enhancement that we had at Community Growth today project and also 9.3.2, a letter to the mayor's office to the Temporary Foreign Worker Programme.
Okay, thank you very much councillor O'Toole for the recommendation for the adoption of the agenda with those two additional items, 9.3.1 Downtown Infrastructure Assessment and 9.3.2, the letter regarding the Temporary Foreign Worker Programme. Any discussion or debate on the agenda as recommended? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well and that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward on any community-related matter to give an update to council, as long as it's not the subject of a public hearing. If it's the subject of a public hearing, you'll have a chance during the public hearing to come forward. So is there anybody that wanted to come forward to address council? I believe we had one delegation that let us know ahead of time that they were going to come and present to council on the Rotary Employment Partnership. Is Mr Robinson here? Sure, come on, come on up to the presenter's table. You can come up, introduce yourself, say hello and please welcome. Yeah, don't go alone. It's scary up there. It's scary up there. Come on, please, yeah, please be welcome and so please introduce yourselves, we've got your name for the minutes.
Hi, my name is Amy Binks. I'm a member of the Grand Prairie Rotary Club and Rhonda is the coordinator for the Rotary Employment Partnership. So she's asked me to do a bit of a speak rather than herself, but I'll make her talk after. I just want, when I heard that the city was committing to the Rotary Employment Partnership, I, I couldn't really figure out how to say just what it could mean for the city. The Rotary Employment Partnership was created about 20 years ago. It is a partnership that the Alberta Association for Community Living, which is a nonprofit organization, supports families who have children and adults with developmental disabilities from birth to death to access the most inclusive pathways as possible. And one of the partnerships and initiatives we have is with Rotary because as Rotarians, service of ourselves, that's what we believe in and it was a really natural gateway. So what we do as Rotarians is our vocation. So the partnership coordinators all around the province like Rhonda sit down with Rotarians and people they know and think about how they can possibly help and hire someone with a developmental disability. What makes it different from other partnerships is that we believe that people deserve to have the most natural, so that it looks natural, they're included in the workplace and that it's not a makeshift job set up to look special or unique. It's a niche that's filled within the company, so it's really real and people are getting paid, so there's no subsidies and even though that's possible in our province to access, if you want to hire someone with a developmental disability, but we find as the partnership and as AASL that it just makes it different and that it just doesn't make it the same for people in workplaces. So in Grand Prairie, we have a very huge Rotary community and I think, I don't want to brag, but I think better than others in the province. So you know, when it comes to Rhonda meeting with people and other Rotarians sharing what the partnership is, I think we're really successful. To date, since the partnership started, there's been over 40 jobs created and currently there's only seven people that are receiving support from Rhonda as a coordinator to be successful. There's so, out of these 40, those other people, we've kind of let, let go of because they're doing so great and just have been absorbed by, by their workplace. And the job seekers, there's about nine people currently looking for employment, so pretty good numbers. And I, I, I think that the, this is something we could brag about with the rest of the province. Only Edmonton is the other community doing something similar. So I think this is a really amazing thing that the city is committed to and I look forward to seeing people just getting jobs and talking about it, talking about it at Rotary Club and getting the word out. I really appreciate it as a Rotarian and I want to say thank you. I'm gonna make my own speech. Do you have any questions for her? No. (Laughter).
Um, well, just that we have had a couple meetings with different departments and it is in the works and been a commitment to hire, you know, by the end of the summer into at least one position or more, whatever we're able to sort of carve out and get, get ready. So.
Can you clarify the process when you say there is a commitment to hire? Is it, are there specific positions? Are positions generally created or is a certain amount of work that needs to be done identified? How does that typically work in one of the partnerships?
So it would, it would depend on what the job is. So first we need to go in and meet and, and see what's available, you know, what the jobs are, what the job description looks like and then what, you know, what the department needs, what areas are maybe not being done by other members, so maybe see management or supervisors and things that are being left undone and create that job and then have the interview happen after that. We would submit resumes to the hiring manager and they could select from those resumes who they'd like to interview. And it is intentional hiring, so you know, it is about finding what will work for the job seekers and what they're good at.
As I said, I do see some questions in the queue, so or comments at least councillor McLean.
Thank you Mayor Given. I think my sneaker's on. I just want to say thank you Amy. Were you a partner in community living when Mrs Kramer came starting the process? Were you there at that meeting?
I was and I just came back from maternity leave, so Rhonda's thrown me back into this.
I'm just glad it proceeded. I can remember when she was at that meeting and the previous council I was on, there was a lot of discussion on different avenues of taking and I'm glad it's proceeding, but it's also not just individuals' disability, but some of these people with disability as well are getting trades or different areas that just need that little emotional help start and Mrs Kramer was very big on that, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the delegation? Don't see anybody in the queue, so ladies, it looks like you're off the hot seat. Thank you very much for coming tonight, certainly appreciate it. Appreciate your work on the program. So as I said, this was an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter, as long as it's not the subject of a public hearing. Was there anybody else that wanted to come forward and address council on anything else? I do see some folks in the gallery, but I have a feeling they may be here for the public hearing portion, so we'll make sure that we can move on to that. And so I'll just make one more reminder that we do have this opportunity at every regular city council meeting for anybody who'd like to come forward. So we'll close the delegation portion of our agenda, move into public hearings. We're going to start off with item 6.1. It is a land use bylaw amendment and I would call that public hearing to order and look for an introduction from administration.
Thank you Mayor Given. So bylaw C1260-8, Barrisso Leenam Ketcham Engineering on behalf of the landowner Riverstone Grand Prairie Inc. has submitted an application to amend the land use bylaw. The subject property is an undeveloped 17.92 hectare site bounded to the west by 92nd Street, to the north by the first phase of development of the Riverstone neighborhood and Woody Channel and to the south by the Countryside North neighborhood. The property falls within the boundary of the Southeast Area Structure Plan, C1060, adopted September 4, 2001. An ASP is a high-level planning document in the development process. It provides generalized details about the proposed development concepts in terms of land use and servicing. The subject property is identified as low-density residential with a note of higher-density residential on this plan, which you can see there and it's hard to see the high-density node, but it's right there. The property also falls within the boundary of the Riverstone Outline Plan adopted August 14, 2006. Outline plans provide a detailed framework for the future development within the plan boundary, including the layout of future roads and lanes, open spaces, land uses and zoning. The subject property is designated a small lot residential with one medium-density residential site on this plan. This rezoning will allow the developer to develop the site as specified in the Riverstone Outline Plan. The land use bylaw amendment proposed here today is to rezone 17.92 hectare portion of part of Lot 71, Block RYL, Plan 5814-NW, from UR to RS and RM. The proposed RS zoning would allow for subdivision and development of the area for single-dedged and semi-dedged housing and the proposed RM zoning would allow for the development of housing in the form of fourplexes, townhouses and four-story apartment buildings. The proposed rezoning is entirely consistent with the Southeast Area Structure Plan and the Riverstone Outline Plan. Administration recommends that bylaw C1260-8 to amend the land use bylaw be given second and third reading.
Okay, thank you very much. So at this point, we'll open for submissions or presentations. First, we start with anybody that's here to speak in favor or in support of the application or the proposed change. Is there anybody that'd like to come forward to speak in, in favor? Mr Barrisso, did you set up camp out in the parking lot? We've seen you already once today.
It's too bad, I wanted to go last, but I think your administration has outlined it very well. This is totally in compliance with the original area structure plan, the one that was done eight years ago and the outline plan and developers and landowners rely heavily on this kind of planning. It's done, it's very costly, a lot of time and work put into it and this is just step one of the development of this. Next is a subdivision application. This is a process we have to go through. We're not violating any laws, any bylaws, any, any structure plans, any outline plans. These guys, these developers buy land based on certainty of this kind of thing and I realize sometimes it's a shock to people when they see it actually starting to happen behind their fence, but I can try and answer any questions, but I, I don't think there is any case for anybody and I'm going on rumors that some people are going to come and object to this thing, but I don't think there's any case for anybody to successfully object to this thing. So this is step one, the subdivision application is next. If there are people that want to influence the development, it's the development permit stage where they should be aware of because I've heard they allow big variances these days.
That may be a reference to earlier today, unrelated. Any questions for the delegation? Councillor McLean?
Thank you Mayor Given. I understand exactly what you're saying and I know it's a lot of developments that they've done from 10 years ago and how small lots are small lots and it costs to save a lot of money to service these small lots and a lot of issues. So on that, how big are these small lots in this new subdivision going to be? How wide? The average width?
11 meters.
11 meters, so 33 feet. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, any further, so any further questions for the delegation? Okay, Mr Barrisso, I don't see anybody else here. Anybody else in the queue for you? Thanks very much for making your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, so as I said, this is the delegation portion of the agenda, or sorry, excuse me, of the public hearing. Is there anybody else that'd like to come forward to speak in favor of the application? I'll call again just to see if there's anybody else that'd like to come forward to speak in favor of the application. Okay, if not, then I'll ask if there's anybody that would like to come forward to speak in opposition to the application. If there is, come on down. You can come down. If you're, it's totally up to you, I understand there's three folks that would like to make a presentation. You're welcome to come all at once if you'd like or individually, it's up to you. However you feel comfortable.
I don't really feel comfortable.
No, I know.
This is a council meeting.
It is not the most comfortable place in the world to sit and I completely understand, but please do introduce yourselves and then, then you can kind of take it away and share the microphone as you'd like. We do like to try and limit it to about five minutes each, if possible, okay? Please introduce yourself.
My name is Martina Hotnott and I'm a resident of Countryside North, properties backing onto the roadway.
And myself as well, I'm Jared Savage, I'm a resident right backing onto this as well. Thank you councillors and Mayor.
And the shy one at the back, her name is Darcy Blakely, she's my neighbor. I want to first of all apologize, we have not had a lot of time to meet together and to prepare and we have only seen like preliminary outlines, we haven't seen any dimensioned outlines or any like restricted covenants or anything for the area, so we really don't know a whole lot about the actual survey of it. However, I understand that there is a lot of cost in the preliminary planning, but it is preliminary planning and it was adopted long before we moved into our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is fairly, very new, so we're just now starting to make bondage in our neighborhood and we have a large playpark in the center. So we're more here on an emotional level, which I know is not good, but our argument is more emotional. We feel that we are making like a small-town atmosphere within our neighborhood. Many of the residents in our neighborhood moved from smaller starter home neighborhoods where there was a lot of rental properties around and our fear is that these multifamily lots will become rentals, even if they are condos, four-story high buildings, fourplexes, those type things. Real estate is booming in Grand Prairie thanks to Grand Prairie being an amazing place to live, but a lot of people buy these properties for rental potential and we moved to this neighborhood because of the security and because of the atmosphere, because we wanted to leave that atmosphere that now may possibly be coming in backing our fences. Darcy and myself live on the public utility divider that comes into our neighborhood, so potentially that would be the traffic area. We have small kids and we're just nervous that there may be not an atmosphere that we want our children to grow up in and we're very new to the neighborhood. And with the pricing of the housing in that neighborhood, I don't feel that rentals should be backing into there. That's my argument. And we have other members of our community that were on a, that had committed, but were unable to attend due to work, so we're here representing the neighborhood, I guess.
There are a few questions I'd ask as well, you know, assuming that it goes forward regardless of whether we oppose it or not, will the covenants in there allow for placement of, are we talking an Inverness Estates style of condominium type thing? Are we talking unfortunately some of the newer fourplexes and fiveplexes in town? They look really low rent. They don't look like the developers take a lot of time to actually build them nicely, care about how they're going to last for 20, 30 years, right? That's what we're going to be backing on as well, so you know, part of my concern is not just whether or not it's medium-density residential. I do realize you have to have that somewhere. I've lived in it, I quite enjoyed it, but I think you need to consider the, the quality of it for the area as well as the fact that, you know, you're going to be backing it right onto a school next door, down a block, kind of a thing. I just don't want to see it turn into a lower-quality neighborhood than it is, you know. Right now, I, I hear there's some commercial developments slated for across the street, but right now there's no real amenities for this section of town. There's no grocery stores, there's one gas station, no car wash, really nothing, right? So unless we start getting that as well to support it, it's going to greatly increase the traffic in the area without really any amenities for them to take advantage of on foot or, you know, with a bike ride or anything really.
Okay, are the, thank, good presentations, thank you. Any questions or comments, questions for the delegation? Councillor McLean?
Thank you Mayor Given. Jared, I'd be very concerned about some of the areas because you just got to go down 92nd a bit and you can see row of Company A, Company B, Company C houses, so I think that's a very big concern you have and it's a legitimate, strong one, so.
Is there covenants assigned for this area yet or what will they, is there some way to find that out? I'm not familiar with it.
Sure, so at this stage, so really what we're doing tonight is creating the land use zone. So right now, if you want to think of it, the, the sort of triangle there, the big area is zoned for nothing.
Yeah.
No houses, no.
It has to be zoned for something.
And so it has to be zoned for something and I believe that's the stage that we're at tonight is zoning it in two different parts, the small lot residential, which is smaller lots, I believe, in your area, and then the medium-density residential, which is, you know, which is the part that I think that we're discussing. So really at this stage, council doesn't get into approving covenants like fence color, style of design.
Oh no, not sort of things. Nothing like that. I was more, like I noticed a couple things in here in this plan that I got given tonight. Will all of these, it says that anything that has no rear lane will be required to be a garage-style house, I believe. Where was that here? No rear lanes are proposed. I'm sorry, I had a quick read-through, we just got.
Like I said, you didn't have a lot of time to prepare.
Sure. I do see, I do see, so you can have a chance to have a read and look for your questions. I do see another councillor that has a question though in the queue, so councillor Terrence?
Thank you Mayor Given. Just a question for, maybe administration can just shed a little more light for our presenters on what the RM zoning, what type of housing that entails?
Thank you Mayor Given. The medium-density residential zone would allow permitted uses such as four-story apartment buildings, multi-attached dwellings and fourplexes and those sort of things. So that would mean that those are permitted with the process of applying for a development permit and at that stage, the development officers would be looking at the style of the building, does it meet the landscaping requirements, the parking, everything in the land use bylaw. And then there are also discretionary uses, that parking lot structure, residential care facility, those types of things would come back to, to council committee to be approved as they're not permitted in this zone but discretionary. So the developer is going to rezone the site and then look for potential buyers depending on what's allowed in the site and then it would be up to either developer to build or, or someone to buy the lot and decide what to, to build on it. So we, we can't say with certainty exactly what is going to be on the site at this stage.
Councillor Terrence? Councillor Terrence, did that, the answer you're looking for?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Are we allowed to respond?
Certainly are, so when you're making a presentation, you're talking to council, so you're certainly allowed to ask additional questions based on what you heard.
Okay.
But you're always talking, talking to council up here rather than to administration.
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanted to expand on what Jared had said earlier. This is an expansion of Riverstone and if you go to Jared's earlier comment of cobblestone, which merges into Riverstone, cobblestone is the area that he had cited about the gas station and the multiple family, like the multiple attached dwellings. If you look at those, those are the example of what he said, you know, would be very not approved for backing onto a neighborhood such as ours. If you look at a four-story high apartment building that's tasteful, like on the north end toward the shopping center where Shoppers, Jugg Mart and Starbucks and things like that are, those are tasteful buildings that people buy to have pride in ownership. Buildings with vinyl siding and the six families and the garbage out front and stuff blowing around, that's not pride in ownership. That is rental properties and that is what we don't want to back on.
Okay, so is there anybody else that has any questions for the delegation?
I feel that reflects the city. I, I just feel that that reflects the city.
Okay, so I don't see anybody else that has any questions, but is there any final comments that you'd like to make for the presentation?
Just, no, that's it.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. So we do make a decision as we go through the public hearing. Thank you very much for having the courage to come forward and speak about your neighborhood.
I know we're small in number, but we're big in heart and we have a lot of people in our neighborhood that feel the same way.
I'm not really big in heart.
Well, thanks for being here all the same.
Yeah.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time.
So is there anybody else that would like to come forward to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anybody else that would like to come forward to speak to the application at all? So I'll ask one last time, just to make sure everybody knows that they had their chance to come forward. Is anybody else that'd like to come forward to speak? So it doesn't look like there is. Are there any further questions for administration before we close the public hearing? Councillor, any questions for administration? I did have, I do have one. I just wanted to clarify between this area, the subject properties or the subject area and the existing homes, it appears, is there a roadway in between? And if so, is it a collector arterial, what sort of, what sort of size of roadway are we going to have in terms of separation between the backs of these existing properties and the new properties?
Thank you Mayor Given. The road between the two properties has been subdivided already, there is a road allowance there and it will be a collector road that will attach to Willow Drive and because it'll be a collector road, it'll have boulevards on both sides and be likely treed on both sides as well. There'll be a requirement to plant trees.
And on, and I don't know if you're able to answer this, but is our standard to have sidewalks on both sides of collectors?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for administration? Councillor Clayton?
Thank you. I just have a comment and a question. I'm just wondering and maybe I should know this and I apologize I don't, but who keeps track of how much we continue to rezone and zone small lot residential and it just seems to me that we're continually approving subdivisions that are RSs and RMs and, and when do we get caught up to the demand? Does anybody know if we're close? Like, I don't know this answer, so can administration maybe tell me? Are we close? Do we have enough RS? Like, it just seems like it's more and more of it.
Thank you Mayor Given. When the municipal development plan was adopted in 2010, there was a policy in there that said that each new outline plan would only have 25% of this small lot residential and this outline plan was approved before that. So when the municipal development plan was being reviewed, these points were discussed and it was decided that. and it was decided that those plans would remain in effect and not meet the new standard. But any development plan that, outline plan that is adopted after 2010 will have only 25% of the small lot. I can't speak to how many small lots we have, or, or exactly what the demand for them is, but I, possibly the developer could speak to the question as to what sort of a demand we have. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Clayton, do you need any further information?
Nope, that's fine, thanks.
Okay. I don't see anybody else in the queue for further questions for administration. If not, I will close the public hearing and we move on to business arising. I don't see anybody else ringing in with questions, so I'll close the public hearing, and we move on to business arising. We look to get into discussion and debate. We need a motion for second reading, Councilor Logan.
Sure, I would move that second reading be given to bylaw C 1260-8. UR to RS and RM being an amendment to the land use bylaw. And of course, putting this on the table means that this is now the time for debate and, and expressing the wisdom of council.
Wisdom of council might be a little step too far, but it's certainly a time for debate.
Expect a lot.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Logan. So open for discussion and debate on the motion, Councilor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. This won't come as a surprise, I'd be, the small lots is ridiculous at 33 feet, and how many you jam in there, costs the city money to clear the snow, it's not good if the whole lot burns if it's a big windstorm. And I'm very nervous about the RM area. You just got to go down 92nd North, and you see what they put in certain areas and how zone changes is happening. I will not be supporting this.
Thanks, Councilor McLean. Councilor Terrence?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just, first of all, I want to say thank you to the, the presenters tonight, to, you know, it takes a lot of courage to come up here and to, to really, you know, show your concern for the, your community, and I, you know, I really respect that. I will be supporting this zoning, though with that said, I believe that, you know, council has to look at, a major factor in our city is affordability. And we have to be looking at providing all sorts of housing types that can service all sorts of people. And, you know, I, I think that there's a deliberate strategy to provide some multifamily and some higher density housing zoning areas in all different neighborhoods. We don't want to ghettoize and have a whole swast of lands where, where it's all multifamily. And so that's why we try to, to balance it out among the community. I think the research shows that that's most effective for, for raising the social standard of, and so, sorry, the quality of living of, of these people. So with that said, I will be supporting these, these rezoning. Rezoning.
Thanks very much, Councilor Clayton. Councilor, sorry, thank you very much, Councilor Terrence. Councilor Clayton, you're next up.
Thank you. I think that, first of all, I, I won't be supporting this motion. I think that in this area already that we have, and I completely agree with Councilor Terrence's thoughts, I do agree that we need to have multi-socioeconomic groupings in residential areas. However, I think this area has too much RS, and I think that, not that I like to agree with Councilor McLean very often, but I will agree that these lots are simply too small, and we have an area in town already that has these concerns, and I, these are just simply too small for me to be comfortable with, so I will, won't be supporting the motion.
Thanks, Councilor Clayton. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to comment as well. We say 25% now for rental areas, and some areas we know it's over 50%, and for parking and everything, it's really gotten out of hand, so tone that out.
Thanks, Councilor McLean. Any further discussion and debate? Councilor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. Must be a funny moon cycle or something, because I think I've been voting with Councilor Clayton all, all day today. I, I too won't be supporting this motion. I am agreeing that there is a lot of small residential, and I'm more about high-density housing, nice-looking buildings, let's build up instead of out. And I think that's a lot of wasted space that we could have there. Even if we applied new design guidelines to, to the house, so it makes it look nice for the neighborhood, I still think that we're, we're missing, missing the boat when we, we are really looking to try to house as many people as possible. So the best way to do that, I believe, is to build up rather out, so I will not be supporting this motion either.
Thanks, Councilor Thiessen. Councilor Logan?
Yes, can I take the prerogative for closing debate?
Of course. Yep, as the mover, sure. And we also have a third reading as well afterwards. Councilor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So a question first to administration.
Sorry, Councilor Redburn, discussion and debate.
I, I believe there's another opportunity for the residents to provide some input at the committee level when it comes back to committee. But in terms of tonight, we're just looking at the zoning, and I will be supporting the motion. I appreciate the feedback, but I think once we have guidelines and rules, I think that we, some of the discussion is about what the quality, we don't know what the quality is yet. We're being hypothetical, those who are concerned about it. Terms of small lot, like we defined that, and Councilor Terrence mentioned affordability. And in terms of how much is enough, I think the marketplace will help us decide with that. And I think at this point, the rezoning reflects what the marketplace needs, wants at this time. So I'll be supporting the motion, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Redburn. Anybody else would like to get into discussion and debate? I will, well, I'll take an opportunity then. I, I will be supporting the motion on the basis that the other levels of documents and support this, and we're people in good faith, bought this land based on what the other documents said that they could ultimately develop in terms of lots. I certainly appreciate the concern around a neighborhood. I think we have to recognize, though, at this level, council, and actually at, at any level, council doesn't have the opportunity to dictate ownership. We can't say that those are only houses that are for purchase rather than rentals. We, we don't have that at any level. I would also suggest that probably every neighborhood in the city, especially today, has some homes that are rental properties. I, I would be very surprised if there was any subdivision anywhere in the city that didn't have any houses that were currently being used as rental properties or investment income properties. I also will be supporting this because I, I recognize that there's, actually, will be a significant spacing between the existing homes and the future development, in that there's a fairly major roadway in between that will provide visual screening with the planting on city boulevards. And I think we'll provide that separation so that you don't feel that you have a high-density immediately backing on to your property. I also want to say that I'm, I, I, and I think council have heard the concerns about the quality of multifamily development that we're getting in the city. I can say that council is interested in, in our strategic plan, has asked administration to look at developing some additional guidelines so that we can ensure that we're getting the quality of development that residents are expecting to see. And so for all of those reasons, I'll be in support of the, the motion. Anybody else that would like to speak on second reading? I don't see anybody else in the queue. Council Logan, did you want to close?
Thank you.
Sure, Councilman?
Redburn and Mayor Given, I have nothing left to say.
Okay. You're, you're just taking that position just in case we didn't get it all.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Logan. Okay, so I don't see anybody else in the queue, so we'll call for the vote. This is the vote on second reading. Please vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, so we would look for a motion on sec, third reading, excuse me. Council Logan?
I would move third reading of the bylaw.
Thanks very much, Council Logan. So this is a motion for third and final reading of the bylaw. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Did everybody feel that they had a good go-around last time? Looks like so, because there's nobody in the queue, so I'll call for the votes. Thank you. And that motion carries as well. So we'll move on to our second public hearing. That's item 6.2, and this is another land use bylaw amendment to create the new rural industrial district. Mr. Welton?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a land use bylaw amendment to create a new IR rural industrial district, and administration is recommending that it be given second and third readings. The community.
Mr. Welton, just to, to catch you there, I see that you're looking at a Stone Ridge map?
Yeah, that's not supposed to be up yet.
Okay, just want to make sure.
That's for, that's for later.
I think the folks in Stone Ridge might have concerns if we're doing rural industrial there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Growth Committee directed planning and development to propose an amendment to the land use bylaw to accommodate the development of industrial subdivisions with rural cross-section roads. Rural cross-section roads use open ditches instead of curb and gutter and storm sewers to manage stormwater. Such cross-sections are provided in the city's engineering design manual. Rural cross-sections cost less to construct, but they need wider road allowances, so the amount of developable land is reduced. Ultimately, developers will have the choice to develop roads with either an urban or rural cross-section, having regard for their cost and the nature of the development that they're proposing. The rural industrial cross-section contained in the engineering servicing manual is, is identified in your report. When development using this district is undertaken, it should be done in a way that, that allows ditches to be replaced with curb and gutter at some point in the future if desired. Also, ensure that accesses do not negatively impact future arterial roads, and ensure that the building setbacks are sufficient to accommodate future arterial road widening where necessary. And the district was written to, to do those things. The amendment will not rezone any land at this time. This bylaw creates the district and makes it available for developers to choose to under, who choose to undertake industrial development with rural-type roads. Given the broad range of permitted uses, it may also be desirable for use in an urban industrial setting. Advertising of this amendment has been undertaken as required under the act. It's the city's intention to attract industrial development to the city, ranging from lower-intensity land-intensive uses, perhaps needing larger outdoor storage space, but few employees to higher-density employment nodes with higher traffic generation and needing central water and sewer. The purpose of the proposed land use bylaw amendment is to create a specific industrial district that provides flexibility to accommodate industrial development in the city using an urban or rural cross-section. And the attraction of industrial development to the city would obviously be a positive thing for the cities financially. Although this water, stormwater will be managed differently using ditches instead of pipes, compliance with urban environment standards for stormwater will be maintained. In addition, walking trails for alternative community mobility may be accommodated in areas developed with rural road cross-sections. This is not addressed through the engineering design manual, or this would be addressed through the engineering design manual and the development agreement, not the land use For infrastructure impacts, obviously, there will be reduced curb and gutter in new neighborhoods that would use this, this type of development, but obviously, more ditches would be provided instead. In summary, most of the uses in the proposed new IR rural industrial district are listed as permitted to maintain a streamlined development process. The number of discretionary uses have been minimized to those where the nature of the use or compatibility with industrial development warrants the use of some discretion. The proposed district is intended for areas of the city that are serviced by central water and sewer systems. Post-annexation, it is council's intent that new industrial, commercial, and residential districts will be created and added to the land use bylaw to accommodate unserviced or privately serviced developments. Also with rural cross-section roads, in, in areas where the connection to water and sewer services are not practicable. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, Mr. Welton. So we will open the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to come forward and present to council? Our entire gallery has left, or is in the process of leaving. So I will, I will call again, just so that our viewers recognize that with every public hearing, there is an opportunity for anybody that would like to come forward to present in support of an application or in opposition. That is a part of every public hearing, and even though nobody's availing themselves of that opportunity tonight, I will take this chance then to ask if there are any questions from council to administration before I close the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I don't know, directly to the council, I don't know how they're going to answer it. I find it very hard when there are commercial on our border being built, and it's called rural. Maybe that's definition, because it's still within its boundaries. I'm finding that very hard to understand.
Mr. Welton?
I, assuming I know exactly what you're asking, the district is, we're calling it an industrial district because typically, the rural county industrial, which is obviously just north of the city borders, tends to be a road with ditches, not curb and gutter development. And that is, that is more typical of a rural setting to have ditches, and therefore, that's, we're calling this a rural industrial district from, because it's, again, just because it's a rural-type cross-section road, as opposed to a, a normal city standard, which is curb and gutter with, you know, with central storm sewers.
Thank you, Dan.
Any other questions for administration? Keep in mind, our example from the last public hearing, if you miss your opportunity to ask your questions now, okay, I don't see anybody that's going to take advantage of that opportunity. So I will close the presentation submission portion of the public hearing, and we move to business arising. I'd look for a motion for second reading. Councilor Thiessen?
I, I will move that we give second reading to bylaw C 1260-7.
Yeah. Sure, maybe just to finish that out.
Oh, you want me to do second and third reading here?
No, just the, the entire phrase, just to.
Okay. I move that bylaw C-1260-7 be given second reading. And third reading.
Nope, just second reading. To create a new IR rural industrial district being amendment to the law.
I just read it already, okay, yeah, to create a new IR rural industrial district.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Councilor Thiessen. So motion for second reading, open for discussion and debate? Any discussion or debate? I don't see anybody ringing in the queue. I just would like to hi, thank administration for the work in bringing this forward. This is another step in the city of Grand Prairie, ensuring that we're open for business and competitive as possible with our rural neighbors. We want to ensure that there is equal opportunity to locate within the city of Grand Prairie for business, and I think this is a big step in doing that. So thanks very much to administration and their work in bringing this forward. I don't see anybody else in the queue for discussion, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Thiessen, would you like to make a third reading?
Oh, I pushed the wrong button. I would love to. Thank you, Mayor Bill. I move that bylaw C-1260-7 be given third reading to create a new IR rural industrial district.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thiessen. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and I believe that handles all of our public hearing business. We had no items of unfinished business, so we'll go right into our reports, and we'll start off with item 8.1, a land use bylaw amendment, and I would look for an introduction from administration.
Thank you, Mayor Given. This is bylaw C 1260-12. The Funding and Development Department has initiated an amendment to the land use bylaw to correct a number of inconsistencies and errors. These amendments will not impact the development services' current practice, this is a minor amendment, and administration's recommendation is that bylaw C 1260-12, being, being an amendment to the land use bylaw, be given first reading, and Monday, June 16, 2014, at 6:30 PM in city council chambers, be established as a date, time, and location for the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we're looking for a motion for first reading and to set date, time, and location. So we'll start with first reading and then a second motion to set date, time, and location. Councilor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. I move that bylaw C-1260-12 to be given first reading as an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thiessen. There is no discussion and debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Thiessen, would you like to make a motion for date, time, and location?
Sure. Thanks again, Mayor Bill. I move that Monday, June 16, 2014, at 6:30 PM in city council chambers, be established as the date, time, and location for the public hearing of second and third readings.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Thiessen. Excuse me, any discussion or debate as to date, time, or location proposed? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We had another. We had another land use bylaw amendment, C-1260-9. Look for introduction from administration again.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A land use bylaw amendment has, application has been submitted to the city of Grand Prairie. The amendment would create a new DC-12 site-specific direct control district and rezone the subject property from urban reserve to the new DC-12 district. The site's located in the Stone Ridge area, south of 68th Avenue, across from the CKC site. The Stone Ridge Outline Plan identifies the use for commercial development on map 12. It is also, it is identified on that map, or on map, on map four identifies as commercial. Map 12 identifies it as a future DC site. Section 4.3 of the Outline Plan states it's the intention that a site-specific DC district be submitted on this site to accommodate the development of a hotel. The proposed land use bylaw amendment is therefore consistent with the Stone Ridge Outline Plan. The site has not been subdivided into a discrete lot, so the amendment would only apply to a portion of the southwest quarter of section 11, township 71, range 6 west of the 6 meridian, as identified in the amending bylaw. And advertising of the public hearing will be undertaken as required. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, Mr. Welton. So I'd look for a motion for first reading. Who would like to make that motion? Council? Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Recommend I move that bylaw C-1260-9, being an amendment to the land use bylaw, be given first reading, and...
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. We'll stop right there, just for a motion for first reading to get it on the table. And there is no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole, you want to continue on with date, time, and location?
And, yep. Monday, June 16, 2014, at 6:30 in city council chambers, be established as the date, the time, and the location of the public hearing.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion as to date, time, and location? Seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And that handles all of our reports, and would take us into committee business. We'll start off with the 100th Anniversary Committee meeting from April 22. I see Counselor Rice isn't here, so Counselor Thiessen, are you going to handle that set of minutes?
Yeah, I suppose I could. Thank you, Mayor Bill. I move that council receive the minutes of the 100th Anniversary Committee meeting held April 22, 2014. It's, if you guys remember, that was Earth Day, so, you know.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the minutes? Does it look like we have everything in order there? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen, anything you wanted to highlight from the work of the committee that day?
Yes, actually, we discussed lots of things. As being the 100th anniversary, there is many, many things going on. I don't know if I can present it quite as well as Counselor Rice normally does, but everything is coming together, pulling out together very, very nicely. The history book will be ready for homecoming weekend, and will be released on the Chamber mixer, which is really exciting to hear about that. 100 parks, we officially received 80 applications, and since that time, we may have very well fulfilled it. Parks manager Lindsay Juniper probably can tell you more about that, but it's very exciting as well. Homecoming weekend as well is starting to shape up, and as I said, there's many, many different other events that are coming on, from Citizenship Court to Grand Prairie Legion. Soapbox Derby is coming around really nicely, and we have more events on the way to fill out, start filling out our fall season as well. So I think we will more than likely do 100 days of activity, which was the intended goal to start, so it's a very, very exciting time, and we're just moving into it right now, so...
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. It looks like we have a question for you. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just got a question to Counselor Thiessen. Chris, and there was brought up, Mr. Government Day, that you chair, but individual brought up about, we're doing a lot of events, but really, it's not really scheduled yet, or here we go, you can come here. Is there going to be a focus coming out of 100th anniversary that say right away, you know, because it seems like there might be a little lacking of that. Is it, is it going to come out that to say, we got these, and we're going to have it all outlined, and outline of all the events?
Ah, yes, yeah, and we did have that discussion at Municipal Government Day. Because there are so many different parts and aspects, different partners that are involved in this, it's sometimes a little bit harder to draw it all together, but it is my understanding that the 100th Anniversary Committee is putting together a little pamphlet that's going to inform the, the public as to what are the events that are taking place this summer. I know we already have some events that are taking part in, in May right now, that we're already moving into from the Fire Fit Challenge and, and other things. Those bear their own advertising, and for future events, yeah, we're going to have a pamphlet that'll be available and probably on tables at Municipal Government Day.
Counselor Clayton?
I just had a quick question. Can you tell me, Counselor Thiessen, has the Canada Day Parade been combined with the Centennial Parade?
Glad you asked that question, because we, we were discussing that today with, at our homecoming meeting as well. There was a little bit of a, I guess, I don't want to name names, but at the, at the end of the day, just being a month apart, July 1st and August 1st, they thought that there might be a conflict of maintaining people and excitement and getting the number of floats that are available there. So in discussion between 100th Executive Committee, as well as the Homecoming Committee, we determined that perhaps combining the parade days into one, and using the Canada Day Parade as a means to advertise for the homecoming weekend on the August long weekend, which is usually a tough weekend to keep people in town, might be a good exclamation point on that Canada Day Parade to ensure that a large percentage of our population is aware of and will be down in Musk C P Park for our big homecoming weekend. So yes, we have done that.
Counselor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Counselor Thiessen, is there someplace a list of the 27 funded projects? I'm interested in that, and if that's, if that's in this brochure or booklet that you're doing, great. If not, I'm just getting in manner, somebody just to give us an update electronically or, or whatever. I'd really appreciate knowing the, I guess, the breadth of those 27 funded projects, because I think they, they are under-advertised as well.
Valid point, yeah.
Back to take back to the committee.
And we will bring that back too.
Thanks very much. So we'll move on to 9.2, the Special Community Living Committee, from May 5. Counselor Redburn? I think you're live there. Am I live, or what?
Yeah, I would move council receive the minutes of the Special Community Living Committee meeting held May 5, 2014. Just a reminder, this was the committee meeting where we looked at the Young Offender Center Purchase and the Bear Sculpture Partnership, and those motions were dealt with last council meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor Redburn. Any discussion or debate on the set of minutes? Does it look like accurately reflects what happened at the meeting? It must, because I don't see anybody ringing in to correct any errors, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We had 9.3.1 was our first additional item, and that was for the downtown infrastructure assessment. Do we have a motion for that? 9.3.1, our additional agenda item?
Yes, I do, Mayor Given.
Counselor O'Toole?
You wouldn't want me to go through the Community Growth Meeting first?
Oh, sorry, excuse me, 9, 9.3. Sorry, I just put it beside, excuse me, thanks very much. Go ahead, Counselor O'Toole, with the, the minutes from May 6.
Okay. I would like to move that the council receive the minutes of the Community Growth Committee meeting helped, held May 6, 2014.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Excuse me, please enter your votes. Sorry, council, just need a couple more there. Check your screen to make sure your vote registered. We're short, we're short a couple folks, just... Okay. Okay, we'll end that, and we'll call for the vote again. Okay. Okay. Try one more time with the computer, we'll call for the vote. There we go, does that look right? Thank you. One more, thank you, council. And that motion carries.
We got her under control, boss.
Under control, you bet. Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. So now, would you like to do 9.3.1?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment a couple things that happened at the meeting first. We had a discretionary use secondary suite that went through approval, and we also brought up a discussion on the public utility lots, and committee-directed administration to prepare an updated report. And if I could, at this time, I'd like to go through 9.3.1 Downtown Enhancement. And I move the council award RFP 11-552-14 for the Downtown Infrastructure Assessment Streetcape Enhancement and Rehabilitation Project to Morrison Hirschfield in the amount of $272,732, excluding GST as the most qualified proponent meeting city specifications. And I'd like to just speak to this motion. This contract allows the city to commence a phased project, beginning with the Public Infrastructure Assessment Strategy, in order to be able to budget, to undertake future streetscape enhancement and rehabilitation projects, in keeping with the Downtown Enhancement Plan and council's new strategic plan.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given, to Counselor O'Toole. So this is starting the process.
Yes, it is. We need to know what, where the problems are before we can fix them.
Okay, any further discussion or debate? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote again. Thank you. That one worked. Motion carries. Counselor O'Toole, 9.3.2.
Okay, Temporary Foreign Program Worker, Worker Program. I move the council approve a joint mid-sized city mayor's letter of support to engage the federal and the provincial politicians in understanding the impact of the Temporary Foreign Workers Program in our region. And with speaking to this motion, the council, the Chamber of Commerce has asked that the city to express concern with the suspension of the Temporary Foreign Worker Programs due to the impact on the businesses in this community and for the program to be continued.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate? Don't see anybody in the queue, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole, I don't think there's anything else in the Community Growth area? So we'll move on to Community Living. Counselor Redburn, I think that one was yours.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held May 6, 2014.
Thanks very much, Counselor Redburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council rescind the appointment of Ms. Jody Hagan as Weed Inspector, and appoint Mr. Tony Sapko as Weed Inspector under the Weed Control Act of Alberta. Just speaking to this motion, yes, this is a redo. Unfortunately, Ms. Hagan declined employment with the city, so probably best that we have a weed inspector that's actually employed by the city, and that's the need for this, this motion. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Redburn. Also, good that we rescind that appointment. We'd hate to have a rogue inspector going around town. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. And second motion, I would move council approve the city of Grand Prairie's partnership in the Rotary Employment Program. I won't go through the program, since our delegation did a better job with that than I would. I will say that administration has consulted with our employees' associations, and administration are certainly supportive of this partnership, and actually, Community Living has volunteered to be the first department to look at possible fits in terms of employees and what needs to be done. And I guess committee really felt strongly that this is another way that Grand Prairie can, can take action to be the most welcoming and inclusive community that we can be. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Redburn. Any discussion or debate? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just concede, Counselor Redburn, that this is a huge step forward, and the city of Grand Prairie is going to look very good in the future by doing this.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Redburn, anything else you want to highlight on that set of minutes?
Thank you, Mayor Given. And just in terms of delegations at that meeting, we had Golden Age Center looking for a future, larger, new facility, and it was sent to administration to come back with a report that would outline, after discussions with the group, what are next steps in terms of the process to that end. We had the John Howard Society and the Volunteer Services Bureau, who gave us updates in terms of some of the FCS money, FCSS monies that they received, and talked about their achievements and challenges. And finally, we had the Grand Prairie Sports Council representative come to talk about city support for the Alberta 55 Winter Games bid that we dealt with last council meeting. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Redburn. So we'll move on to 9.5, the Community Safety Committee meeting from May 13. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of Community Safety Committee meeting held May 13, 2014.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on those, that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council approve the city of Grand Prairie entry to a 911 grant program agreement with the province of Alberta.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I, I'd like to make, move council give first reading to bylaw C-1166E Traffic Bylaw Amendment to Truck Routes.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. So there's no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Thank you, and that motion carries. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council give second reading to bylaw C-1166E to Traffic Bylaw Amendment to Truck Routes.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on this recommendation? Counselor McLean, if I remember correctly, this is to add an additional area for a truck route to allow some vehicles to stay out of the downtown core. Is that correct?
I think it's a very good step in the right movie, right? Exactly, Mayor Given. It's, it's actually going to go right in front of us down the road, and turn at EMS building, I don't know the exact avenues and street, and turn right on where the traffic ticket is, instead of going right downtown by the Tim Hortons and trying to turn. I think it's a, a very good move.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on the motion? If not, then I'll call for the vote on second reading? Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council have third reading of bylaw C-1166E to the Traffic Bylaw Amendment to Truck Routes.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor McLean. As you'll notice by the emphasis on "have," this is a motion to have third and final reading of this bylaw amendment here tonight. In order for it to, for us to have that third reading, this motion must pass unanimously, otherwise the bylaw amendment would come back at a future council meeting. Any discussion or debate on the merits of having third reading? I don't see anybody ringing in. I recognize this was discussed extensively at the committee level, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. So Counselor McLean, we can have third reading.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council give third reading to bylaw C-1166E to the Traffic Bylaw Amendment to Truck Routes.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And Counselor McLean, I think you had one last piece of business.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council award Tanner T-33-... Thank you Mayor Given, I move council award tenner T dash thirty-three dash five five two dash fourteen for the two thousand fourteen traffic single repair and replacement program for TV trafficking in the amount of one million seventeen thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars excluding GST as the lowest bidder meeting city specs.
Thanks very much councillor McLean, any discussion or debate? I would make one comment, this would be for the Community Safety Director. I hope that in our process, administration, at the engineering design stage for these projects will, uh, ensure that, uh, the installations are sensitive to pedestrian infrastructure, um, and essentially to their site locations. We did run into some challenges with the last installation of traffic lights in the downtown core where, there were some cabinet installations that were maybe not as sensitive to their, their sighting as, as could have been possible. Uh, so I hope that we'll use that as a learning opportunity and this time around, um, give that uh, an additional level of oversight before sites are finally approved, so, certainly happy to support this, recognize the need to do those replacements, but, uh, just want to make sure that we're not doing the replacements without regard for the impact that it has on our pedestrian infrastructure. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor McLean, anything else you want to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yes, thank you Mayor Given, uh, this vote the nine eleven grant program, this is, uh, was initiated a resolution in two thousand seven, AUMA, city of Edmonton and the city of Grand Prairie. And what they found was cellphone use has really overtaken landlines. And we're almost seven percent cellphone use in the city of Grand Prairie. So this is provincial legislation, it's directed by the province. And, uh, it's going to equal to about forty-four cents per month per cellphone, which wasn't receiving before and biased by this passing tonight, we can submit for grant monies. So if it didn't pass, we wouldn't get no monies, and they're going to collect it anyways.
Thanks councillor McLean, uh, we'll move on to nine point six, councillor Logan, the, uh, Community Corporate Services Committee meeting.
Thank you, I'd like to move that, uh, council receive the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting.
Thanks very much councillor Logan, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes, does it look like it's all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed? They must be, because nobody's ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor Logan, anything you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
Thank you Mayor Given, we don't have any business for council coming from that meeting, but, uh, several things of interest, one of, the first one being the delegation from, uh, uh, Barron Mass of Vacuitara Utilities giving us a report on the new building fund grant applications, and I think the committee quite properly referred that to administration for a little bit of, of, uh, thought and, uh, and review. We also received the draft format for the twenty fifteen, twenty twenty-four capital budget report, uh, which I'm glad we didn't have to do anything because my brain would probably break down. The, uh, we received an update on the exceptional service initiative for information, and I thought that was a very worthwhile initiative and, uh, we'll see what, uh, what actually comes out of that. And, uh, I think the last one was the, uh, we, uh, received the, uh, Grand Prairie unaudit financial statements and schedules for the three-month period ending March third, first, twenty fourteen due to councillor Terrence Fine moving on the motion.
Thanks very much councillor Logan, um, looks like we've handled all of our committee business. Uh, we had no items of correspondence today, and I believe, um, our delegation business was handled with their motion on the Rotary Employment Partnership. I don't think we have any notices of motion that have been filed. So that'd take us to council member reports, and I think we had only one external, um, report. Councillor Terren, you wanted to report on the twenty fifteen Special Olympics.
Thank you Mayor Given, yeah, so I got to attend my first Special Olympics, uh, meeting and it was, uh, great. Things are well on their way to, for the planning. Uh, we had a representative from, uh, Special Olympics Alberta at the meeting who, uh, informed us some of the numbers that, uh, we're going to be looking at. And, uh, right now there's, uh, close to, uh, a thousand athletes who, uh, could potentially qualify for the event. Um, but it was determined that, uh, Grand Prairie can host up to, uh, seven hundred and fifty. So, uh, throughout the year there will be, uh, qualifications in the, in the various sports to, uh, kind of narrow it down to that seven hundred and fifty people who will, uh, attend, and that's, that's just the athletes, that's not all, you know, parents and families and friends that, uh, that will come along with, uh, with the athletes, so, uh, things are well on their way and, uh, looking forward to a great event.
Thanks very much for the update councillor Terren, obviously exciting news and lots of work ahead of you. Councillor Clayton.
Sorry, um, I did have a committee report as well, if that's all right.
Sure, please, go ahead.
It had been discussed earlier, but I just wanted to advise council and everyone else that the, uh, intent to, um, host, letter of intent went for the fifty-five, uh, plus games with support of the city as well as the county. So that letter of intent has gone ahead. Um, I also wanted to, uh, let you know that the Economic Development Advisory Committee has met, um, met recently rather. And, uh, they are looking to work with the city and the chamber etcetera on anything that they can do to, uh, help facilitate, uh, the concerns in regards to, uh, temporary foreign workers. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Clayton, were there any other, um, presentations from external agencies, boards and committees? Councillor Logan?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Given, uh, two things that I would like to mention, on the seventh, we did have, uh, a meeting of the Centre Two Thousand, uh, board, uh, which led to, uh, an excited discussion of, uh, of, uh, not continuing with the, uh, project of, uh, redoing the roof. Since then, we've received some additional information that may or may not throw that motion into some, uh, shadows. So we'll wait and see what the next, uh, meeting of the board actually comes forward with. Hopefully we'll have some good hard information on the shape of the roof next time, uh, to, to finally deal with this. And on the eighth, I, uh, was at the Community Futures, uh, uh, meeting, uh, which are always interesting, uh, even though I usually miss the dinner.
Thanks very much councillor Logan, um, so have we hit all of our external agencies, boards and commissions? Looks like we have, and so we'll start council member roundtable, and councillor Thiessen, you've been on fire today, why don't we start with you?
Well, if you can call it that, but thank you Mayor Bill. Um, I'm not going to speak long since I have been on fire and obviously, uh, lighten up the mics here tonight, but, uh, uh, over the past couple of weeks since our last council meeting, I, uh, had the, uh, luxury of attending sixteen events and, uh, unfortunately missing one due to illness, um, that I was scheduled to be at, so I don't mind admitting to that. Um, I just wanted to highlight a couple that I thought were especially, uh, awesome. Uh, one, I was, uh, invited to give greetings on behalf of mayor and council, uh, to the Kids Place, uh, Dave Bar Arena and to read, uh, stories to kids, mothers, grandmothers, parents, all sorts of people right there in the Dave Bar Arena. I did four shows of reading to kids, uh, and bringing greetings on behalf of mayor and council. It was quite, uh, an awesome time over the two days that we were there. Um, and, uh, also, uh, the Real Shorts Film Festival, uh, I was, happened to be there on the Wednesday night, one of their opening nights where we're all invited to be there for the Q and A. It was an excellent, excellent, uh, showcase of, uh, some of the finer talents in filmmaking, uh, of up and coming filmmakers. Um, I also took in, uh, another showing on the Saturday, uh, with some of the children's shows as well. Uh, so it was a very worthwhile event that I thought, uh, went over swimmingly well, and they handled it great at the, uh, GP Life Theatre. Uh, and, uh, I was proud to say that as part of a committee that helped to fund that excellent event, so.
Thanks very much councillor Thiessen, councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much Mayor Given, I attended, uh, twenty-five events over the last couple of weeks. Uh, and I did attend, uh, the Real Shorts Film Festival as well, joined with many colleagues here at council. Uh, enjoyed the event, ate my fair share of red licorice. Um, also, I attended the Victim Services, uh, fundraiser on the weekend. Gave, uh, a little bit of financial donation through buying, uh, an item in the live auction. And I was, uh, had, uh, Lauren Radburn and councillor, uh, Rory Terren and their wives at our table, and a very enjoyable, entertaining evening. And I think they, uh, actually made some money at this one, that's good. I also spent, uh, part of a day with Thomas Lukazek. I toured, uh, him and Walter Pascoe, he threw the, uh, East Link Centre, jeez, I wanted to call it the multiplex for a second, and that's not right. Uh, anyhow, we, uh, actually went down into the basement and, uh, got to walk next to the pool and, uh, I can tell you that Thomas Lukazek, uh, was very impressed that we had a partnership that we do have here. The ice arena, the, the, uh, schools, as well as the gymnics. And, uh, he was just, could not believe the cooperation that the city has with partnerships and the school boards, so, thank you very much.
Great, thanks very much councillor O'Toole, councillor Clayton.
Thank you Mayor Given. I, uh, just wanted to thank council for, uh, stepping into some of my duties as I was away, uh, the week before last. I did have one announcement sort of information that I wanted to, uh, briefly discuss, there, this Saturday, there's an art exhibit, uh, it's created by local Grand Prairie performance and visual artists, it will reflect the, the, the live experience of newcomers to Canada and Grand Prairie. The research is in collaboration with newcomers, local artists and local agency representatives, working with the newcomers. Uh, it's, it's called collectively, a welcoming Grand Prairie community art-based inquiry. Uh, the tickets are free, it's Saturday night at, uh, GPRC, um, in the recital hall, the Clem Collins Recital Hall. Uh, if you are looking for tickets, uh, you could possibly, uh, email myself or I could get the information. And, uh, it's just sort of a, a neat little project that, uh, we're working on, uh, um, through, um, the city's welcoming and inclusive communities committee under social development, so, thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Clayton, Terren.
Thank you Mayor Given, so I as well, uh, attended the Real Shorts Film Festival and just wanted to highlight, uh, you know, what a great event that is, and I kudos to, uh, Terry Searback for, for the great work she does with the festival there. Uh, one of the highlights was, uh, there's the Frantic Forty-eight Film Challenge that, uh, happened the week prior and it was, uh, eleven groups of, uh, filmmakers came together and they had forty-eight hours to make a film. And, uh, it was great to see two teams, there was one from Lutrit that, uh, traveled all the way down and one from, uh, Fort St. John. So it was great to see the regional nature of the event and, uh, the quality of films that, uh, were shown on the Saturday was, uh, was incredible, so it's great to see the local talent there. Um, on the eighth, I, uh, attended Chamber Mixer, had some great, uh, chats with some, some of our local business, uh, community. And, uh, on the sixteenth, went to, uh, the crime prevention, uh, barbecue and it was, uh, great to see, uh, people out to celebrate, uh, the week that, that was.
Thanks very much councillor Terren, councillor Evern.
Thank you Mayor Given, um, the seventh, I attended the Kids Place Mother's Day concert, um, I must say that, um, councillor Thiessen, uh, as he mentioned, I only went to one of his performances, but it was superb. And the, uh, the children thoroughly enjoyed his storytelling, uh, it was great. Um, I also wanted to send kudos to Terry Searback and team for the Real Shorts, Real Short Film Festival. Uh, May eighth, uh, I did, uh, attend the FCSS Directors Conference held in the city, uh, and, uh, was able to bring greetings, uh, on behalf of Mayor Given and council. And then went to the Centre for Newcomers Open House, uh, which where they shared their new website and their new location. Peace Library System, I had the opportunity to, uh, to help out and attend that meeting, uh, the AGM and Board Meeting, and it was kind of like old home week, I'd in a couple of years, but for about five years before that I attended. Um, and, uh, May thirteenth, Grand Spirit Foundation Strategic Planning Session, we spent the entire day looking at, uh, our vision and, uh, I think that will bode well for the ongoing operations of the Grand Spirit Foundation. Um, finally, I did attend the Grand Prairie District Victims Services fundraiser as well, as, uh, two mentioned, and at least, uh, George Canyon was there and performed, which was quite a, quite a treat. And, uh, kudos to them for trying, they tried Locker Wars in terms of bidding, so, you know, a TV program turned into, uh, something that, uh, stored words, thank you, what did I say? They were in lockers, but they were stored, stored lockers. Uh, but they're trying something different, and, uh, I think, uh, kudos to them for, for that ingenuity. Thanks a lot.
Thanks very much councillor Evern, councillor McLean.
Thank you Mayor Given, I was at a few events this last couple of weeks, I'll speak to three. Uh, May seventh, I went to the Real Shorts Film Festival, Looking for Love. And one thing I noticed how well it's taken off at the schools. Theaters are full and I'm hoping this year didn't work out with different events with my children, but I'm hoping next year my children will be involved in this, um, to go and check it out to theaters, but I want to give, you hear the word kudos, thank to Terry Searback, because not only for this festival, but how it is funded and how she receives her funding and how well managed, and the percentage of the money used actually from donations from government is very, very low, eight or nine percent, so they do a really, really great job on this. And, uh, I have to speak up on that part, so, uh, as well, May eighth, I, uh, I went to the GP of New, for, Home for Newcomers Open House, it's just, uh, upper floor in the same building downtown and for their announcement, and I think this, I, I mentioned there about, just mentioned to our mayor Bill, that I think it'd be a good idea if, uh, maybe somehow they're linked to our webpage or something for newcomers, the way we're growing for so many thousands and people coming here and talking about foreign workers and everything. I just think that GP newcomers would be very nice, so a click link. Um, and then the last one I want to speak to, and I think is very important, was, uh, I was able to attend the proclamation reading to kick off, kick off to Crime Prevention Week and a lot of us councillors had a basically jolt there, but under speed limit. And I think it's so important to look at this because during the week, you, you seen an event that happened behind the keg, I knew individual, they wouldn't let go because, uh, a special unit had to go to a house and, uh, quarantine it. So, uh, when you're talking about Crime Prevention Week, it's very important and our members do an incredible job, thank you.
Thanks very much councillor McLean, just to clarify, you went to the pa, film package titled Looking for Love, or you went to the festival Looking for Love? It was, it was, okay, that was the title of the film package, okay, I just wanted to clarify if, okay, uh, councillor, councillor Logan.
Thank you, uh, I only have one, uh, item to, that I want to, uh, mention, and that was, uh, on the fifteenth, I attended the Prairie Gallery Board. Uh, sat on the Prairie Gallery Board for umpteen years and, uh, really enjoyed it. Uh, although I felt it, uh, good to, uh, get out of the way for, uh, councillor Radburn, who's now council's rep on the board, so I submitted my resignation to them and, councillor Radburn.
Thanks very much councillor Logan, uh, so I'll try to be brief and just highlight a few of the events that haven't been mentioned. Um, on this Wednesday, the seventh, uh, it was my honor and pleasure to be able to, uh, meet with Chamber of Commerce representatives, um, our economic development officer and the County Grand Prairie Economic Development Officer, uh, as we discussed, um, uh, items of concern, uh, with the Philippine Consul General. Uh, for council members that might not be aware, um, the Philippine Consul in, uh, Vancouver, uh, for the second year in a row now, has chosen to offer consular services here in Grand Prairie, uh, through an outreach campaign. Uh, as I understand it, they were able to offer service to, uh, uh, over seven hundred, uh, individuals. Uh, so these were Philippine nationals who, uh, came down to Grand, who came to Grand Prairie or either were in Grand Prairie, uh, to get their passport renewed or visas or, or other sort of consular services. And, uh, I think it goes to show a couple of different things, uh, the large number of, uh, the Filipino community that are in Northwest Alberta. Um, and it also goes to show that Grand Prairie again is, uh, fulfilling its role as a regional service center. Certainly appreciate the fact that the, uh, the consul chose to, uh, have Grand Prairie as the center of that. And, uh, certainly appreciated the opportunity to discuss the changes to the Temporary Foreign Worker Program, which is obviously a great concern, uh, to the, to the Filipino government. Uh, I, later that day, I also had an opportunity to, um, go with the, uh, the Consul General, uh, to the Rotary Club meeting and, uh, we had an opportunity for him to speak to the, to the, to the meeting. Uh, on the eighth, I was away in Edmonton, uh, I was a part, a presenter on a panel at the Edmonton Real Estate Forum. Uh, this forum was held at the Shaw Conference Centre, and I would say that there were, um, probably, um, just under two thousand people in attendance, uh, at the overall conference. Uh, our panel, um, where I was there with the president of Clark Builders, uh, Cam Gill Developments, uh, Wexford Capital and, and myself were the presenters on the panel, looking at the, uh, opportunities that there are in Northern Alberta. Um, it was, uh, an opportunity essentially for us to sell the city of Grand Prairie. When I got there, it turned into an opportunity to differentiate the city of Grand Prairie from Fort McMurray. Um, recognizing that a number of the, well, the majority of the attendees, uh, really were thinking of Edmonton as north. And so when they started to think about, um, other communities where there were investment opportunities or development opportunities, uh, they saw all of Northern Alberta really as the same, uh, and so I took that opportunity from the panel to sort of differentiate Grand Prairie and, uh, our regional nature. Um, and, uh, I want to thank, uh, Brian Glavine, our Economic Development Officer. Um, I can say that our, uh, retail market analysis, um, study came in very, very handy at that session. And also had lots of opportunity to meet with, uh, just informally, um, with, um, builders and developers about, uh, the downtown, uh, property project. Uh, so hopefully to try and generate a little bit more interest in the, uh, partnership between the City of Grand Prairie and the Public School Board. On, uh, the tenth, I attended at the Grand Prairie Hospice Pallet of Care Society's, uh, Swinging with the Stars, their first ever event. Um, I want to, uh, congratulate them for hosting such a fantastic event. I believe it raised, um, somewhere in excess of seventy thousand dollars, uh, on the night. And I want to congratulate, uh, Wendy Sakash, who is one of the dancers. Uh, she raised, she was the top fundraiser of the dancers, and she raised herself, uh, over s- twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, for the Pallet of Care Society. So fantastic to see the support of the community, uh, for that new event. And, uh, was, was really, really well run. On the twelfth, I was at East Link Centre to do the proclamation for the kickoff of Crime Prevention Week. And on the sixteenth, I was, um, at the City on Ninety-Ninth Building for the barbecue to wrap up Crime Prevention Week. Um, and in between there, on the fifteenth, uh, Thursday, the fifteenth, uh, along with the Director of Community Living, um, and, uh, representatives from the Grand Prairie Public School Board, the Grand Prairie Catholic School Board and Grand Prairie Regional College, participated in a scar, uh, excuse me, a scores workshop, um, looking at the future of scores and, uh, more opportunities for those entities to work together, uh, for the future of our community. And with that, uh, I have nothing left to report, and I will call our meeting adjourned.